Let us begin. This is the meeting of the Rutland Town Select Board, our regular Tuesday evening meeting. Today is February 13th, 2024. We have a full Select Board tonight. Sharon Russell, Matt Geddy, Mary Ashcroft, Joe Donardo, and Kurt Hathaway. It is six o'clock and we're going to get started. Please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We should do the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if you could remain standing for a moment. We have had, it's been a long week for several families and groups of Rutland townsfolk, and I would like to recognize some folks who have passed. Mike Delahanty, our constable, his mom Tammy passed, Matt Geddy's grandmother Betty Pike, and Tyler Rabidou. Tyler was 22 years old. He had served in the United States Army. He had served as a junior fighter fighter here in Rutland Town. He had done many Boy Scout projects, including some at Northwood Park, and his parents and his sister were also all involved in acting in many things in our town. So we send our sympathy and best wishes to the families involved, and we send them our best. So a moment, please. Thank you. Okay, Select Board minutes for January 30th. They're on the desk. Motion's been made to approve and seconded by Sharon. Any additions, deletions, corrections? If not, all in favor, please say aye. I think we're anyone opposed. Okay, I'm gonna sign and circulate. All right, any board member announcements? No? Kurt, Joe, Matt, Sharon? All right. Couple of announcements from your chair. The town reports are out and in the mail. Remember that if you are looking at this, there is a page missing. We have additional pages here, and you can pick one up and just tuck it in. That's the summary sheet for all of our budgets. And we're honoring our town police canine rooster. So good for him. And thanks to Bill and Carrie for all of your help putting this together. If you haven't received one in the mail, there are additional ones available here at Town Hall. So please come over and pick them up. The circle is also out. There's information in there about budgets, both our own town budget and the school budget. So take a look, and there's good stuff for your reading pleasure. Thank you. Okay. Are there any questions from the floor or public comments from anyone who is here who wishes to address the board? Come on up, please.
Thanks for the time. I'm Ken Watson. I'm here on behalf of the Rutland Free Library. I believe that you all have received a letter. If not, I have hard copies here for you as well.
It is on our desk.
Excellent. Okay. Well, I can be brief tonight. The reason for my visit this evening is just to let you know, lend a voice to the letter here, that as you can see, the Vermont State Department of Libraries has a competitive grant that they're administering, a portion of which Rutland Free Library is going to be submitting an application for, in total $1.5 million, which is the maximum allocation to any single library. We'd like to use these funds to address some of the issues with the building, including addressing access and compliance with the entrance to the building and adding a new entrance, as well as some upgrades that need to happen inside the building. As we are putting this application together, we've known about it for a while. We've been preparing the application for the grant, and just have been waiting for the State Department to announce that the window is open. So they've let us know that. And so now we are seeking support from the supporting communities as we put this application forward. And what we're asking from the Select Board tonight is just a letter, I say a letter loosely, some comments of support from you that, just to indicate to the State Department of Libraries that we're putting this application in in good faith of the supporting communities. There's no financial obligation. It does not commit Rutland Town to anything, as much as it just lets the State Department of Libraries know that we are requesting this money with the support and backing of our supporting communities.
Okay. Well, I'm a big supporter of the library. I'm in there every Friday or Saturday afternoon, usually, returning books after the weekend. And yes, I do have a few late ones, but that's what happens.
I won't tell anybody.
They know. They know. So I am in favor of a letter of support, and I'd be willing to draft it. I don't know how the rest of you folks feel.
I think yes. I make the motion that we have you draft a letter.
Okay, okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. So, March 5th, so I'll get something to you well before then. And do you all want to sign it?
Yeah, we probably should.
Okay.
You guys have statistics on how many town residents or numbers or whatever?
Yes. Actually, if I'm not mistaken, I think Randall had some in the circle.
I think he did.
In the library, the message from the director of the library.
That comes up every year at town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. We'll get you ahead.
Seems like we ought to pick you up.
Yeah, they answered.
My fellow trustee, Joe Bertoloni.
Thank you, first of all, for showing your support for this. The thing about our statistics of our numbers, Rutland Town's numbers have been growing, and the number just has been growing from Rutland Town. A few years ago, we found ourselves in a position of trying to figure out, you know, the 05701 ZIP code and what that meant for, you know, Rutland Town versus Rutland City. And we've been devoting the man hours, or person hours, excuse me, to try and figure out exactly who's where. But we do have statistics. If you want updated ones, I can surely, I can make sure Randall sends them over in the morning. But he did put some out in the circle with the pre-town meeting information a few weeks ago.
Yeah, let's see. Rutland Town saw the most growth in cardholders in fiscal year 2023. We added 136 residents to a total of 1,529 cardholders. So put another way, four out of every 10 town residents has a library card.
And I can say, as the school librarian as well, with that hat on, one of the things I've been working through our school library is to ensure that the relationship between the two libraries is very robust, to the point where we're helping teachers get books without having dip into our classroom budgets. So make sure the teachers have books that they can read to their students that align with the lessons that they're working on, as well as our students having expanded access to various eBooks and audiobooks. We use Sora at the school, which is an eBook and audiobook platform that meshes up really nicely with the eBook and audiobook platforms that the free library uses as well. So students can kind of double dip between two really large library services digitally, so they can just do it on their Chromebooks, which they have through school. And they also have all the access, and I push the access a lot to get our kids learning as much as possible with as many books in their hands as possible. And Rutland Free Library has been indispensable with that. They've really been, whatever you need, let's make sure kids have books in their hands.
Good. Okay. You'll have your letter, and thanks very much for representing the town.
Yeah, thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Okay. Any other comments from either anyone on the Zoom screen or in the audience? If you're not otherwise on the agenda? Okay, so we'll move into our agenda. First up, for department heads, Mike Rowe, Town Rec Director.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Happy belated birthday to you, Ms. Russell.
Oh, did we miss a birthday?
We missed a birthday, a big one, too.
And you had to bring in your own birthday cake?
I know, isn't that?
That was the hint.
I'm sorry, Sharon.
Happy birthday. Do you want us to sing happy birthday to you?
Yes, I want to hear you sing happy birthday.
No, I'm good. My voice isn't working.
I sung.
So you said you'd do it, and now you won't?
I said we, we.
I can do it.
See, Mary will sing. There you go.
Well, but you need to do it, too.
Happy birthday to you. There you go. I just.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sharon. Happy birthday to you.
Now, if you were in the cafeteria, they go, are you one? Are you two? Are you three? I think they'd pass out by the ten. You can do that.
I hope he gets sick as hell on those days. Excuse me, folks.
Thank you. You swore it. Oh, yeah, now I gotta rethink. I really don't have much. Our last week of basketball is this week. Actually, tomorrow will be our last set of games, so hopefully you've got to check out a game or two. The fifth and sixth grade boys will be playing in the GLADZIC tournament, which is in the second week of March. That's over in West Rutland, that they have their annual tournament. So you can go check our kids out there, or any local kids out over there. And our three, four boys are playing in a city jamboree on March 2nd. After that, you may sign up at any time for our spring sports, for softball and for baseball. So feel free to do that, since we are able to do that year round now. You're more than welcome to sign up. So please go ahead and start that process if you'd like. That will be starting around the 1st of April, so that'll be coming quick, very quickly, actually. As long as Mother Nature and the groundhog were correct, we should be all set. Other than that, skating rink is the skating rink. It's a pond. Now, we're going to do swim lessons there next week over vacations. A little water park, plenty of water in it, though. But hopefully, it'll freeze, and we can get some time out there. Other than that, I don't really have too much, unless you guys have stuff for me. We did celebrate the other day, as Matt was kind of talking beforehand. Randy Dewey and Stan LeCarts, if you've been in Rutland Town since, I don't know, the 60s, then you know those two gentlemen. And they, this is their 50th year of actually officiating sports. And so we honored them yesterday in between the games, because they were both working, they're still working for us and the local towns. So if you see them, thank them. That obviously is a job that not everybody likes or enjoys, but somebody has to do it. And, you know, they've been fantastic to our community for a very, very long time. So if you get to see them, thank them for their service. So we honored them the other night. Other than that, I don't have much, unless anybody has anything for me.
Anything for Mike? I have a brief something, maybe for the rec committee and Mike. The Rutland Town seniors, we have a treasurer, Marty Wasserman. We have a secretary, and we have a vice chair, a reluctant one, that would be me, but we don't have a chair or president. And at some point, we might need more support from the rec department for the Rutland Town seniors.
In which capacity?
On some of the administrative stuff, setting up meetings and everything. So I toss it to the rec folks to maybe figure out how, where the seniors are. I mean, they've got a group, and it's growing in size, but the leadership piece is kind of.
Is it Randy, and that's no more?
Randy is not doing it anymore.
Okay, I did not know that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So.
We can talk about that in committee and figure out a way to do that. The only other thing I forgot, too, is we had had initial conversation, not only in committee, but in general, as far as taking over, wrong word, well, maybe, is having the Northwood Park being under the umbrella, the whole park being umbrella of the town. And I'm just curious as to where we might be. I thought somebody was gonna look at, and I could be wrong, I could be having a senior moment. I am 57. I'm right up in there.
Yes, your chair was supposed to be in the land records, looking at the transfers of pieces of Northwood between the school and the town. And we had had some preliminary discussions, very brief, very preliminary, when Tina and I bumped into each other. And I know it's something. And actually, I have a list, a two-page list, and it's on my list in my office at home.
I just wanted to keep that on a burn. That's all. Because I don't want it to go by the wayside. I think it's important that we somehow figure a way to do that.
Yeah.
Moving forward. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Otherwise.
We just don't want to buy the property that we gave them.
Right, and that's why Mary was gonna look.
That's what I was gonna see what the terms were back and forth. Yeah.
And to get that officially, this is what happened, and then move forward and have the conversation with the school.
Yeah, it was supposed to be where the high school was gonna be.
Correct.
And that never happened, so.
But once we have that official, then we can go to the board and say, okay, this is what we'd like to do. Let's start talking. And then that's my only.
It just makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
Without a doubt, it makes a ton of sense. So I just don't want that to get, like, I know it's not top of the list, but I also don't want it to get pushed aside. I just don't want it to get pushed aside. So I'll just keep reiterating that. Now I have nothing.
Okay, now any questions? All right. Thanks very much, Mike. Dave Sears, Town Road Commissioner.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Kind of quiet out there right now, which is, we're okay with.
They won't let me say that, because I jinxed the town.
Yes, Mary, don't.
But that's okay. I mean, we're gonna, we'll be in the morning, I'm sure.
It's coming at 1:00 AM.
Yeah.
It's coming.
But it's not the feet that they were talking about. So.
Most of me last night.
Yeah. So we've just been doing quite a bit of maintenance in the shop. We did a brake job on the Western Star. We built two wing carts for, to put the wings on and off the trucks, which is kind of like a safety thing. It's just so much easier than hanging them off a loader bucket or something like that, and safer and everything. We spent a day filling potholes on major thoroughfares. Lot of smiles and happy people about that. Our big event for the last couple of weeks is we got the speed message boards up on Post Road, which was a big hit.
Yeah, I saw that.
I believe when I called JP, his reaction was woo! Funny.
Very articulate.
It was funny. I am about 85% done with the paving list for the spring, and AOT put out their Class II paving grant. So I'm waiting for some information from some pavers. We got to put together an itemized list for the grant. So I'm just waiting for that, and I'll get that in as soon as I get all the information from that. And that's kind of where we are, except for.
We had a meeting that we had last Monday morning.
Yes.
And the first topic on our meeting was the proposal from the Clarendon regarding the quarter line maintenance, which brings me back to September, when we proposed it. And after a discussion with Dave, he would prefer to discontinue the way he's been doing stuff with his plan. This one has been fairly mild, and things are going okay. I do like his idea of having the crew go out, learn some greater operations, and, you know, we can rent a machine, do it ourselves, get it done when we need to. So we're gonna stick with that and continue down that road. They were appreciative of it, and one resident, well, you know, if you get in trouble, call Clarendon. If you get in trouble. And I wanted to tell her that we started with Clarendon, and they didn't want any part of this, so we're going our own road now. We're going down this way. Then we discussed the installation of the generator at the highway garage. That was kind of nothing that was planned, but as it has turned out on several storm events, that's been running a lot, and makes it a lot easier for the fire trucks to leave, seeing all that were there. Initially, that expense of putting that generator and getting it up and running, getting stuff done, we took it out of the generator maintenance and the general budget.
Yeah.
And I talked with Dave and Kurt and I, when we discussed this last Monday, we would recommend that that be taken out of the highway maintenance budget instead, if that's okay, Carrie.
So is that, yeah, let's.
Put the money back. I think that's in emergency management, or wherever that maintenance is, and just take it out of Dave's. Yeah.
So do you want a motion? Is that a motion?
If we have to do it by motion, then I'll make that as a motion, or is that just, we can just do it as a recommendation?
But let's put it in the minute, so there's no question about stuff. Second by Kurt, maybe?
Yep.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to pay for the installation of the highway generator out of the highway garage maintenance line rather than the generator maintenance line. In the future, maybe something different will happen, probably, but.
Well, we keep, as we grow and we keep realizing the convenience of having backup generators at the important buildings, we'll have to add a little to that generator maintenance line in the general, because that covers two fire stations now, this building, Post Road, Pumping Station, and the school. So, and now the highway garage. And eventually, you know, we'll probably have to do something if we want for the transfer station, because transfer station is unique, because that's tree face. But I don't know if that other generator could be, with a little bit of work, that probably could be.
It probably could work. It's, he's got the connections for it and everything. It's ready to go. The only problem is.
It needs a transfer switch.
Right. And it's outside, and it's a diesel generator. So if they need it in January, and it's 12 degrees out, it's probably not gonna start.
No, it'd have to be set up like yours. Yours is heated. That's wired for block heater. But that's something to do down the road.
Okay, so motion's been made to make that transfer of the expense. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. No one opposed. Okay.
And then we talked about the Route 7 sidewalk and the coming up with a municipal project manager. And it's a pretty involved job, and it would take too much time away from Dave's regular duties. And so he thought we would be best hiring somebody. Our recommendation would be that we hired the folks that did the scoping study, but I don't know if they're on the list.
On your desk is some information. It's the first set of paperwork there.
AOT.
Yeah.
Responsibilities, expectations, that's the two pages.
Yep.
And there also is the list of. First page, Vermont, at the bottom of that list, bottom of that page, and top of the next page shows the ones that are.
And who do we use?
It was Dufrane Group.
Oh, Dufrane Group, okay.
And that paperwork is all about this project.
So Stantec is on the list, and we've used them, and.
We have Stantec and VHB that are on our preferred vendor list, but we would need to talk with them. We've also used Dubois and King for some things, but we would need to talk to them to see if they're even available to do this, so.
All right.
So that would be, I think that's what we should do, is authorize Bill to contact him, see if they're interested. I don't know if we have to request.
VHB's already doing one of our projects, so it might be easier just to tag some of them.
Whatever the Highway Committee thinks is a good idea. You use Stantec, too, so.
Do we have to get a request for a proposal from them for the?
There's a process we have to follow, yes.
So if we ask, like, three of them to do it, and get the little bidder, or do we just pick one, or?
Do we have to go through a bid process?
So there is.
According to the state grant?
If we want to use the at-the-ready process, there's the six pages that explains to you the at-the-ready process. None of this is quick and easy. So it's just a matter of which direction we want to go, so.
So maybe we should contact the three that we've worked with and see if they're interested, and if they want to go through this. Does that work?
As long as we follow the process.
Yeah. And then they'll be made aware of the process if they want to be, or they're already aware. If they've done any work for the state, they're well aware of the process.
Yep.
So then, you have to come up with $50,000 for matching.
We have a match for that entire $625,000. What's our match?
156.
156. But that would, that grant includes money for this project manager, management. I believe. So there will be no additional cost to the town. We have to come up with $156,000 in order to get the rest of the grant.
And that's over how many years? Okay, so.
We can budget into several. And we'll have a little time to think about what we're doing. And it'll be 2029, and we'll be sitting here and thinking crap. That's how fast it'll go. But I think that's the best way. Take the ones that we've done business with, ask them if they're interested. And if they are, then what their timeframe, how soon do we need to hire somebody?
The sooner we start this process, the sooner it goes to the next step.
All right. Does that sound good?
That sounds good. So it sounds like Bill's gonna look into it and see who's available.
So what did we figure? Dubois and King, Stantec and VHB. And ask them if they're interested, and ask them if they know what they're getting into. If they say yes, we'll pick one.
And we wanted to start with you, because, you know, we really value your work, but we fully understand that this is a lot. So, yeah.
We just reviewed the mailbox damage policies that we have, and the Class 4 road maintenance. Nothing, no changes made, just updated to meet and match the rest of the policy format that Bill's been working on. I'm not sure if there's any action needed on that or not.
Well, Bill says right at the top here, adopted 2/13/2024.
Okay, so I'd move that we.
Minor language changes.
Okay.
So if you, there are originals in the folder there, if you want those, but.
So I'd move that we adopt the two. The Class 4 road maintenance has just updated, and the mailbox damage policy has updated.
Motion's been made and seconded to adopt the two policies, mailbox damage and Class 4 road maintenance. Discussion, Matt?
So when you say minor language, we're talking about typos, or?
Like in the mailbox damage policy, we have a form on the website where people can submit information that wasn't in the previous one. So we've added.
Just, very little. Nothing in the functionality, but it's just how you can access it, and in those steps that can be taken. Before, you used to have to come in here or call somebody, and they'd come out. But now you can do it online, and somebody might get back to you.
It's happened to us a time or two, and the response was quite rapid.
Okay, we've got any other questions about either policy? Ready to vote on them? If so, all in favor of adopting the mailbox damage policy and the Class 4 road maintenance policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous. So I've got the, looks like the originals. And I'm gonna sign and pass them along. Let's start.
The other part of that, Matt, the other part of change was using language like you use in other ones, where it says, it's an effect until it's amended by some, you know, it's an effect will be amended by some support. So that's, we never really had that language there before about adoption. So that's part of it now.
So then, we did talk about, a little bit about, one of my most favorite pet peeves is people still plowing snow across town or public highways, not just the town, and that's illegal. So we are going to have the state statute posted on the website. And so that'll be out there, and we can do that. In this meeting, we kind of ran two things together, and we might as well cover it now. One of those was the.
It's the other one.
David mentioned here about the signs being put up. We talked about the new truck could be here as early as the end of the month, possibly. Any update?
Called yesterday.
Yep.
Still the end of the month?
No, it's in. Called me and left me a message, because I wasn't there, and I called him back today and playing phone tag now.
Once it's up and ready and running, we'll put the other one out to bid. I think that'll be the plan. We'll get a description from you what it is, and we'll move forward. That's good. We'll get a description from you, what it is and we'll move forward. That's good. And then as part of our highway meeting, we kind of did a building maintenance meeting and we went through the four bids, the five bids that we had for the lawn mowing and stuff and after discussion, Kurt and I would recommend that we continue with Connor Galoppo's bid. He met all of the requirements and it's also, we said, there was some question at the original when those were open two weeks ago about this certificate of insurance, but he, because he is doing our mowing now, that's on file. I do believe he might have provided an updated one.
Yeah, he should every year.
Yeah, so we're, we're good there, but that's our recommendation.
Okay, so the recommendation is to hire Connor Galoppo at the bid of $4,600 to mow town properties for 2024. Is there a second?
I think.
Question's.
I do believe it is for.
24, 25.
It's two seasons and there might, I can't remember, Bill, was there a little increase in the second year or not?
The comparisons are all under desk too.
Yeah, somewhere. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, $50.
Yeah, it's a little bit higher the next year, but it's a two, two-year contract. So it'll be 24 and 25 mowing season.
For.
Yeah, because of the 4,600 is two years.
Oh, okay. All right. Two years. All right. Any discussion questions? All in favor of the motion to hire Connor Galoppo for two years, please say aye. Aye. Okay, it's unanimous. Good.
That is pretty much all the highlights of our highway and building maintenance.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave.
Yeah. Any other questions or, you know, I'm going to hit you with this.
I'm with it.
Okay. Trash at the end of Park Street. You've been diligent about finding and cleaning up places in town like up on Quarterline Road.
Boardman Hill.
Boardman Hill. And thank you for cleaning up Creek Road when they dumped more tires again. Honestly, there's a, there's a regular group, you know. Somebody's getting.
That's only because Joe stopped them from dumping them on Dire Road that day, so.
Then to run around the corner.
That's probably it. But the newest one seems to be, well, maybe not so new, the end of Park Street. Mark Youngstrom, who in the past has done some engineering work for the town, was doing the annual Christmas bird count for the Audubon folks, which is kind of fun if you haven't done it. And they were down there and, you know, actually said there was an incredible amount of garbage and trash and it seems to get worse every year. So, and we do own, well, right down to, right down to the creek, I think, yeah. So if there's something the highway committee can do or the road commissioner can do and strategize about how to keep folks out of there or keep them from dumping.
Is it on town property though?
Well, the town also owns some property down there.
Well, yeah. Yeah, but we also don't, we don't have a class four section of road down there anymore.
Do we give it up?
It's never been on the list.
Never been on the list. I think that's.
It was a driveway for all intents and purposes, where that house, when it was down there before it burned.
Yeah, I can't remember where the city.
Well, he also sent this email to Mayor Dunges too, so we're, we're all in this.
I know the city, when they plow, they just, there's, there used to be a gate there. I'm not sure if that's still there or not, but they just plowed to the end of the asphalt and they pick up and that's it.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think a mole worked. A mole. Right at the end of the asphalt.
Well, there are days down there when that looks like one.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose we'd have to go look and see where it is and if it's on the town's property, then we'll have to figure out some way to stop it. If that's no, if that's not a class four road, it's not a trail, it's not anything, it could be gated and locked.
Yeah, okay.
I'm trying to think, because I think our parcels to the south.
Do you remember where it was?
Yeah, because Harold and I, Harold and I sold it to the town.
Yeah, if you go straight off Park Street, isn't that parcels of the south a little bit?
It is.
So it's not actually on the old Park Street that used to go across the old bridge.
The Billings Bridge.
Yeah.
I'm on the other side.
The land that we got from you guys, who does that adjoin?
Boy, you know, I haven't looked at that. Foley, I think. I think Foley's there.
So I mean, we could find out who owns down there and see where this is being dumped and then talk with them. We might have a little more leverage there than we did on Dire Road.
Okay.
And that brings up a point too of the Dire Road. Do we need, after we made the, we moved last week.
Yeah, you were going to do a write-up and we were all going to sign it.
What was the follow-up?
That's the follow-up. We have to do, we have to do an official set of findings and conclusions.
Minutes have the detail of the conversation.
Right, but it has to be also, and that's why we did so much detail in the minute. So that's to be converted into a single, you know, act of the select board. Do you want my help on that?
Well, we'll talk about what you need.
Okay, okay. Just remind me tomorrow.
What I'm thinking is that once we officially do this, notify them in that finding, in that decision, in what we send them, we tell them that you can now put a gate across there and work with your renters to keep folks out.
Yes. Yeah.
Because that was the whole.
That was one of the, that was one of the findings, because as the town, we couldn't do that.
The whole idea was for them to put some kind of gate up there to keep people out of there.
Right. Okay. Thank you for reminding me about that. So, okay. Okay, so there it is. Thank you.
We'll have to do a little research on who owns what down there. What I was thinking is that little piece of land that we got from you guys, maybe whoever owns down there might want it and we could.
We might.
What we want, what we want to do?
Might want to hang on to it.
Okay. Want to build a bridge? I don't know. I don't even know where it is. I'd have to go.
I haven't been down there a long time, but.
Bill's given us a map.
Tent City going on down there last, that was a few years ago.
Was last year too.
Was it? Okay. All right. Thank you, Dave. Marcia Choffey, Town Head Lister.
Good evening, everyone.
Marcia.
Didn't know whether you had any questions about the form that I gave to Bill for the select board to sign off on.
So this is the certificate of no appeal or suit pending. Listers have signed it. It's dated February 8th and the select board is supposed to also concur that we know of no appeal or suit pending related to recovering taxes paid under protest. So.
I'd move we sign it.
Motion's been made to sign and approve this certificate. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion or questions of Marcia on why we're doing this? We do it every year.
Yeah, we have to because that's part of state statutes. And the Vermont Department of Taxes, we have to ascertain that there are no, you know, appeals pending, so. We had a, we had a very quiet year last year. We only had three, three grievances and they were very simple to address.
See, now she gets to say that. I don't get to say that, right? Because I would jinx it if I did.
We'll see. You'll be knee deep in appeals next year and we'll all remember this meeting.
All in favor of approving this.
Wait till the educational rate comes out.
All in favor of approving the certificate of no appeal or suit pending, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. It's unanimous.
Um, late this afternoon, I received, well, the listeners received an email through Comp 61, which is our listserv email that on February 21st, there is going to be a webinar dealing with the Act 127, which deals with the educational tax rate and how it is going to affect printing of tax bills, which was very curious to me to find out how it's going to affect us. Because according to Dave's paper and according to what we've been following on VLCT, Rutland Town is going, going to be affected greatly by the education tax rate.
There is an article in the circle from the school board about that, so there's some information.
Yeah, but we've been following it on, through the legislature and through VLCT, so we're, we've been, you know, watching the webinars and keeping track of, of what's happening and where it's going. So, and, but on a lighter note, I just wanted to thank the select board when opening up the town report to see the generous increases in our hourly wages. I don't know whether you've noticed it or not, but those hourly wages are way out of whack.
Okay, where?
Where they came from.
What, what page are you referring to?
43 or 44. It's the, yeah, it's the 23, 24 from July 1st, 23 to June 30th, 24. If you look down on our rate of pay, it's.
Yeah, that wasn't what we approved.
No, it wasn't. And it's not what I handed in.
Okay.
But if you're willing to give us those, those raises.
Well, the, the voters are voting on the budgets, not on the items on page 43, so we can duck that just a tad bit, Marcia. Okay, well, thank you for bringing that to our attention.
The old college try, so. But anyway, and I think the rest of our, my report or whatever is going to be taken under executive, executive session.
Okay, that relates to the contract?
Correct. Yeah. I did email a copy to everyone, but then Bill, Bill said that he also made copies for you.
Yes, and I had, I had also sent it on to Kevin Brown for review, but I guess it's up to the board to decide whether we want to have Kevin weigh in first, but we'll, we'll hit that at the end of the meeting, so thank you. Thank you on that, Marcia. Okay.
Other than that, we're getting ready just to stuff envelopes and we have to get the schedules and the inventory lists out by Friday of this week.
Okay. So Marcia, is the tax map proposal from your office or from somewhere else?
Well, I think it's done through Bill.
Okay.
And that's where it originally came from.
Okay. And, but you use it as part of it with, part of your work for listers, right?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, so why don't we take that up now? This is, was on the desk. It is item B under action needed, the board to review for approval, contract renewal for tax map maintenance. This is a three pager. So I'm, I'm aware of the tax maps and I refer to them. So Bill and Marcia, what are we looking at here?
Well.
It's the same as we've done in the past.
Yeah.
It's the same price, Bill. Is that correct?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so it looks on the last page, kind of summarizes it. The client, well, that client, that's us, 3,100 for the tax for the MAP GIS maintenance service. And then if property record cards, including building sketches are provided, the client shall pay an additional 20 per building added or changed. I don't know. Do we do that?
Well, lister cards are online.
Yeah.
And that is done through CAI.
Okay, so we don't provide it to these guys.
Maintains it as well.
Okay. Okay, so is there a motion to approve this tax map maintenance proposal?
Almost.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the proposal. And it looks like we all get to sign it. If we approve it. Any discussion or questions of you, Marcia, on this? If not, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. Anything else, Marcia?
Uh, no, I guess I'll just close this out and see you in executive session. Losing my voice here.
Yeah, don't do that.
Mary, do we actually, I'll need to sign this or can we amend that to authorize you to sign it or whatever?
Oh, I think it'd be fun for all of us to sign it.
All right, somebody will have to draw.
Somebody will have to.
Looks like I draw the short shot.
All right, so let's move on to
Sign upside down.
Chris Clark, Town Fire Chief.
Good evening.
Good evening.
January was a busy month for us. We had 27 calls. Halfway through February, we're up to six, so slowing down, so that's good. A few weeks ago, we had a mutually called to West Rutland and one of our trucks got a little damage to it. I talked to Mary Ann today over at West Rutland and they are going to pay for it. They're offering for all that, so that's good. But I had Earl's look at it. I gotta have awesome graphics come down and look at it. Hopefully tomorrow they can come down. But nothing major, but West Rutland is aware and they are willing to take care of all of it, so. Not a big deal. Just wanted to let you know.
Good, thank you.
Uh, other than that, I don't really have anything.
I was very pleased to see some of the firefighters over at the Rabidu Memorial Service, so thank you. Thank the officers for that. Appreciate that.
I will thank them.
Anything for our Town Fire Chief? If not, thank you, Chris.
Thank you.
All right, Kerry Clark, Town Clerk and Treasurer.
Happy birthday, by the way, Sharon. You lost some cheesecake.
Nobody else sang. I'm just pointing that out. Nobody else sang to Sharon.
I sing a little bit.
Thank you, man.
This is better if we don't.
You didn't sing. Troublemaker.
I have one thing and then a request, so I'm wondering if I could be part of a executive session later as well, please.
And what's the, is it a personnel matter?
It is.
Okay.
Thanks. The only thing that I have tonight is I need some either approval or guidance. So I got a request from Rutland Town School, want to say a week and a half ago, that basically, long story short, they were requesting back funds for postage payment for the circle. This was the very first thing that we were talking about, the school and I. So I came aboard in 2020 and COVID hit and we had a transition between the circle with Carol Bam and Teresa Kullig, I think. And then we went to Janelle Fagnan doing the circle and there was this transition period. So ultimately, they were wondering where our portion is that was normally paid to them. At first, I was very much in the dark because we, I came aboard and the transition happened and all I knew from that point forward is we pay Janelle, who does the circle, $500 each time she does the circle. um five hundred dollars each time she does the circle, okay? Um so I was a bit confused on what they were asking me for. Um so I had, I called Sherry today and with her and Pam Mock's help because Pam has been here for a while also, knew what was going on. I am now under the understanding of how this works. And this is where I get to my point, I promise. So um in the past Rutland Town cuts a check made out to the circle and it goes to the school. And that is their reimbursement for half of the printing and half of the postage. They original, they foot the bill at first and we reimburse them. Um that hasn't been happening because I didn't know about it um since December of twenty-nineteen. So then I requested, I said, okay, so how much do we owe you? I have a email chain that they came to the decision that let's just start this year by doing what they used to do. Um which is we cut a check to them, the circle of fifteen hundred dollars. It's a yearly fiscal year payment to them. And that is to cover the fiscal year, half postage, half printing.
Okay.
Because currently, they are footing the bill for all of printing and all of postage. And we are paying Janelle separately.
Right.
So.
So I'm looking at the, and and I think that I'm looking at page eleven in this year's report, which includes a couple of past years. Um miscellaneous contributions slash circle, this is under our general budget, it's line uh oh three-five-six-three-three. And the amount is and has been forty-five hundred dollars, twenty-five goes to Janelle. The rest was our contribution, I thought, toward postage and printing. I thought it was towards printing and the school did the postage, I don't know how they broke it. But you're telling me that that hasn't been paid?
That portion to the school I never was aware of.
Okay.
They are totally okay with that, they just said, let's move forward, and I suggested, let's move forward as well. By discussing it with you, it'll be in our minutes, it's in written form where we can refer back to if there's ever any future changes or questions about this, then we have something in writing saying this is how it goes. We pay, apparently Carol Bam never got.
She did not get paid.
Volunteered, she did it voluntarily.
That's right. So we didn't have the twenty-five hundred being paid. But we did have a contribution for, I thought it was the printing costs, I wasn't aware it was a split between postage, but we both were contributing, I thought. So it looks like we could actually, we've budgeted for and there's money for this year. So before we close out the fiscal year in June, so we can do it this year and we've built money in for the coming fiscal year, so we should be able to do it, okay?
And I have no question about that, now that moving forward, I know about this.
Okay.
Um so the deal is that, it's not a deal, it's to continue, it's um when the fiscal year starts, they will invoice me in July. And I will then cut them their check for the fiscal year, as in past. Um but so that'll happen in July, but right now I'm going to give them a check next time for fifteen hundred dollars, that'll cover this fiscal year.
I think that's
Oh yeah, that's appropriate.
That's fine, because the money's in here and that was the purpose.
Right, exactly.
We weren't aware that it wasn't being paid, so.
So the
Yeah.
Two or three years.
Happened.
They weren't aware that they weren't getting
They were not either, Sherry and I
Four years for him to figure it out.
Well, Sherry and I talked and both her and I came aboard. I don't know if it was at the same time, but certainly we haven't been here where it was in the past, like when Carol Bam was doing it. Um so that's why we had Pam Mock in on the conversation where she told us what happened in the past and they looked back in their records and then I could see in my records why my records say allocation for the year, which I wouldn't have had a
Yeah.
Clue, so um uh we owe them money and we will give them money and we will give them money moving forward.
Fifteen hundred for this current year.
That's correct.
And they're not looking for the other two years.
They decided, I said, have a discussion between the two of you, Sherry and Pam, I said, get back to me with what you want. Um do you want back pay? Or do you, and they just decided, let's do it for this year and go forward, and I think that's very generous and kind of them. And they were good to work with. At first, I was very confused and like, what are you talking about? But that's what happens when things aren't explained.
Thank you, I was sure that we'd had it in the budget.
We put the money in, it's but if
That's right.
If they don't let you know, or like you usually get an invoice, can't pay a bill unless you have it, right?
Right.
Okay, good.
Way that works.
We have a good working relationship with the school, because we've done all highway paving stuff up there and such, so yeah. We're, we help each other out.
We happen to know a couple of the teachers that worked there too, I mean. You didn't hear me. Um I don't have anything else, I will just say that our local ballot came today. I was waiting and waiting and waiting, and we have many requests for absentee ballots. And um they arrived today, so we will be getting those out.
And we have a BCA meeting coming up?
On the twenty-second, um and that is simply just to discuss our schedule for election day. Town meeting, election day, which will
What happens?
Be um the same as any other year, except for we are voting on presidential candidates on a separate ballot.
Yeah.
Not to be confused with that will be the president, it's just candidates that will be on the ballot for November.
Right.
Correct. And that's all I have.
Okay, any questions or comments? Thank you on the whole bond thing. Yeah, I had announced last meeting that everything was fine, the next day I found out it
She jinxed it again.
I did, honestly, honestly, I'm not gonna, the next day we found out that our Rutland Town didn't show up on the list of um Vermont Bond Bank um grantees for the year, there was, that were due to go to the board, their board, two days later. So it turns out that Carrie had started the application early, so it had a different, I don't know, number, it didn't get picked up. Long story short, the Carrie, bless her heart, and the people from the municipal bond bank got together on the phone put all of the rest of the pieces together for the application. And that afternoon, the Vermont Municipal Bond Bank had that information and they voted to approve the bond. So yes, thanks, huge thanks to Carrie, Bob Fletcher was helpful too in flagging the fact that we didn't have. Um we weren't on the list, so I don't know what happened. I'm grateful to you that we got it done and oh my, okay, so I'm not ever gonna announce that anything is finished ever again.
No, if it was a jinx, but uh certainly hurdles were left over. That was a scary time.
When will we?
Oh, speaking of which.
We're, at some point, we're gonna start, we're running out of our funds.
Well, see, next meeting, we're gonna have, before the next meeting, we're gonna get a packet of papers from bond counsel, our bond counsel, Bob Fletcher, and we're gonna have to approve, we're gonna get it in advance, but at our next meeting, we need a quorum to approve the application from the bond bank, and we'll know then how much the, what the interest rate is.
I just wondered when we gotta start accessing it.
Yeah, in March, when it's allocated to us.
Yeah.
Um we are, so this group of bills, there isn't a VMS invoice. Um but I'm assuming that there will be one coming soon. I am using the capital improvements because that was next in line.
Yep.
For the the previous one that we paid last time and probably the I'm going to assume it's going to be next select board, that it'll come for any that um come. And then when we have the bond, which will, I think it'll carry us until the bond.
Okay.
I I didn't know if we were gonna have, we might have a little gap there because you can't time it perfectly.
No.
Their their work schedule, you know, their work schedule and their costs and the bond bank's schedule. If they, if they were in agreement to any point, I would be pretty amazed, you know, that you would have seamless transition.
Apparently, I was very boring.
Taking his cake and going home.
Hey, Mike. Take one for your wife.
Uh that's where this is going.
Okay.
Um John Weston, the bank representative of our bank TD, he's calling me tomorrow. Oh, a web chat, because he reached out to me about the funds that are coming from the bond. And he wants to chat with me about where they're going to land.
Okay, yes, yes.
So I'm hoping to hear what the options are.
Okay.
Um and then let you know kind of what I understand, I haven't been through this process before. Um I, he mentioned something about are they, are we going to get them in the general fund checking account? Or
Is that an Andrew question?
Somewhere else. It could be, I'm going to start hearing what he has to say and then go from there.
Someplace that pays interest. Center, they were in a their own, their own place.
They were in the US Bond Bank, you requested it, and then it filtered through a um which is still set up, a money market checking account.
Right.
Um and then you wrote checks out of that, but it was only as you, yes, it was only as you requested them, so I'm assuming that's how, it'll, it's still there, it's still functional, so maybe that might be the option. I want to hear what he has to say.
All of the funds from the bond for Senate.
Senate Rutland, yes, I believe our balance is eighty-five dollars left.
But that account's still open, so theoretically, they could put it in, you could use that same account. Would that make it easier for you?
Uh if if it's consistent, it, not if it's consistent, it's consistent, so yes.
Maybe that would be, you know, you can ask that question, can we continue to use the account we have?
Yeah.
Yeah, because that would, anything that makes your life easier.
And if they, if the bond bank has our checking account number through all the application process it'll be just a simple transfer, if however that works, but it could be exactly the same way as Senate Rutland, you have to request it as you need it, so I'll find out more.
And only the amount needed, and does the bond bank hang on to the rest?
That's what happened with Senate Rutland.
Okay.
They they keep that and then we reach out to a woman named Deb Booker. She puts that money
We don't get the interest on it, the bond bank gets the interest on the bulk, okay.
My, yeah, that's kind of how it sounds, you think about it, yeah.
Okay, well. If we get a low enough interest rate, we're fine.
I'll let you know when I find out.
Okay. Anything else for Carrie? Okay, thank you very much.
So uh we can have an executive session in the end.
Personnel issue for you, Marie's got a contract issue. And Personnel Committee has two issues, so.
Mine isn't going to take very long, just so you know.
Okay.
I don't know if
Would you like to be first? Would you like to be first?
I mean, heck yeah, but.
I think that's where you were going with that, it's not gonna be too long.
Okay.
Maybe.
Been here all day.
Alright, so Mike Delahanty is not with us. Uh Ed Dumas. Town Police Chief.
Someone has a different picture of us up there.
Pretty proud of that picture. Okay, so last two weeks, we had a seventy-two calls for service, twenty-one traffic stops. We were busy. Guys, any questions there?
Are the lights making a difference up by the school, the the sign?
I went, uh well, last week, we met and I mentioned, we had the signs the next day, Dave was up putting them on and then the day after that, I think Bill was up putting the blue and flashing red lights on and I haven't, I would go by a couple times, I haven't really spent a lot of time up there.
Okay, well, they caught my attention.
They, yes.
It does seem like people are going slower now that they're aware.
Yeah.
The one at the east actually picks you up just as you come around the corner, so it gets you early, so that's, that one's actually set up blue, red.
Oh, okay.
So if you're one little faster than you need to, that thing gets you like way down in the corner, so.
Well, I must, I didn't get that, so I must have been doing okay.
Yeah, I think you gotta be doing forty, forty-five. Forty-five, the blue light took mine, I was trying to see how fast you had to go to get it. Because I turned right there. But they do, they do catch your eye.
If you catch me there, I'm just testing it.
Ed, do you have any, did the um Diamond Run Mall people contact you at all about sensor security or any security up around there?
Let's see, Keith Whitcomb was a, contacted me.
Yeah, okay.
I made a comment. I made a couple comments, he uh he told me he couldn't print one of them, so. We did the other one.
Okay. No, I was just wondering if there was any follow-up there about?
No, I haven't heard anything.
Have we had any calls since at the mall?
Not. Yeah, we had one complaint, I think today Ted went there because uh somebody was inside the Spartan Arena and one of her plates got stolen off her car.
Okay.
That's one I'm aware of, it could be more.
Okay.
Uh Lynn did the uh your monthly stats for the month of uh January. Initially, she did it, we had, let's see two hundred and eighteen calls for service, hundred and thirty-seven uh were from the south end, which is sixty-three percent, looks like it went down. But then she did a little more digging, because it didn't seem right, because we'd been down there quite a bit. Uh JP had stopped sixty-four cop uh traffic stops, so that raised our amount up, so she took those out. And so we actually spent uh out of a hundred and fifty-four calls, we spent a hundred and thirty-seven of the calls were at the south end, so we spent eighty-nine percent of our time dealing with issues at the south.
And that's with the traffic stuff taken out?
That's with the traffic, yeah, the traffic stops taken out of it.
Okay.
That's have at this point.
Alright.
Take some of these.
Oh, we do have um while you're here, we have some liquor license and tobacco license requests. Um let's see, so Papagayo Inc., first-class restaurant and bar license. I don't know, where is that? Oh, Carrie left, do you know where it is?
It's gotta be uh sounds like it's uh, hold on there. Johnny Boys, it sounds like.
Oh, is that Johnny Boys? Okay.
Yeah, what's the address?
Uh there's not any.
Okay, I'm quite sure that's where it is.
It's first class and third class.
Yeah.
Um JW Sandry Inc., tobacco substitute and tobacco license. And Midway Oil Company, second-class license and tobacco license.
Nope, no, no issues.
No issues with any of those?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to approve these licenses? Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of approving these license applications, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, um it's unanimous, so another. Anything else?
I have nothing at this point now.
Okay.
Still, meeting at some point in the future.
Yes, um actually, we came close, but yeah, other things, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Yeah, um and we're also we're, if you can, no, I think we we need to have a discussion among the board before we have the police committee meeting, so that's hopefully what we're gonna do a little later. So that's hopefully what we're gonna do a little later.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. If that's, yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. John Paul Fagnant, town health officer, public safety building clerk and second constable. Marie, does he happen to be there?
Hi, good evening.
Oh, boy.
Hey.
Hey, JP.
Birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Sharon. Happy birthday to you.
She's either crying or looks like she's gonna be sick. I can't tell.
Me too.
So I, I know you've all had a chance to see the lights on the post road.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Love those lights on the post road.
Yep.
Other than that, the building is going along excellent. We're, the, the roof panels are on. The weather enclosure is finished and the interior work is starting. Um, we didn't have, we didn't even need to have a job meeting last week because there were no issues. Uh, we'll be having another one Friday at ten. Um, but other than that, if you have any questions, I'm all set.
No, I'm amazed at the progress. I drive by there every Saturday morning on my way up to the transfer station and I'm impressed.
The weather's.
JP, JP, do you know when the, um, the, uh, siding panels are coming? When, when they're gonna start with the siding?
So that hasn't come up in any of our meetings yet, Joe. We can discuss it on Friday. I'll get back to you.
Okay, cuz I thought when Ed was here, meeting with Kurt and I for the, this building, he had said something about, um, the, he thought the middle of this month or about now. So I, I didn't know if maybe there was, I was kind of surprised that they put the plastic up and enclosed it because I thought they were gonna start with siding, but, um, it would just be kind of interesting to know. That's all. That was the only thing I was wondering.
Sure, I'll find that out and get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for our town health officer, public safety building clerk or second constable? If not, thank you very much, JP.
Did I mention the lights on Post Road? Have a good night, folks. Thank you.
Good night. Barbara Noisepulling is ill. She sent me an email earlier and she apologizes, but she's not on the call tonight. She did have a couple of things. One is that the Rutland Regional Planning Commission Housing Survey is going well. Um, there have been, as of last week, about seventy responses. Um, just a reminder that we have the little cards here. I took the survey. It's really kind of interesting. And it makes you think a little bit about some housing options that I hadn't thought of before. So it might be worth doing. Um, and also there, at this week's planning commission meeting, which is Thursday, February fifteenth, we have a lot of stuff going on, um, Thursday. The, um, the river corridor presentation will be given by the Nature Conservancy, the Lake Champlain Basin Program and DEC. We can zoom into it and I think she sent this around to all of the select board members. And you can also get it on the, um, town website. You can zoom in at seven fifteen and watch that presentation. I'm gonna try and do it in and around other things. So information should be in your email box. Okay, that's it for Barbara. Uh, Bill Sweet, Town Administrative Assistant to the Select Board. That's what it is.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Been pretty well getting through the list on the desk. So, uh, a few, few more things to go over on there. Uh, we have, uh, the regional ambulance reappointment form is there. Uh, Mary, you have the actual form. I wrote, says the letter.
Okay.
Uh, it is a three-year term. Uh, Marty is our current representative and he is willing to be reappointed.
I make the motion that Marty Wasserman be reappointed to the regional ambulance.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to appoint, reappoint Marty Wasserman. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It's unanimous. So I'm gonna send this around.
Okay, while you're sending that around, I, uh, we got the report back from Stantec on the water quality monitoring for our landfill. Uh, there were results that were above where they would like them to be. There is nothing that's requiring us to take immediate action other than fixing one of the vent pipes, but that's not too terrible. Um, the details, the details are all in here, uh, but there was just some levels that were higher than they anticipated. Uh, but nothing that requires action at this point. So the, the next testing, the next fall will be the next time they do it. So there's no need to do it any, any earlier than that. So we are done, we are done once a year, but, but we do have, we do have some higher levels, but, um, just more advisory at this point. And the details are there if you would like to read them. Uh, I did, uh, I did get, um, uh, the company that I was talking to about the short-term rental registrations actually reached out to me, uh, wanted to know where we were and let them know that we're, we're, we're still, we're, we're still working our way through that a little bit. Um, he did give me an updated count and we started this about a year ago and we are, there's a twenty percent increase in short-term rentals in the town in a year.
So what, what's the number? What are we up to?
We're up to thirty.
We're up to thirty. Okay.
I'm sorry, uh, thirty-five. We were, we were, we were at, uh, twenty-five and we're at thirty, uh, we're at thirty now.
Okay. All right.
Yeah.
All right. Let's move that on to.
We should do something.
Agenda for next time.
Sure.
And I think it's relying on me to get that first page toggled. Yeah.
Yep.
To combine some of the things that you pointed out on the first page.
Uh, and the only other thing, oh, yeah, the, I, I, I had, I had the speed signs on mine too, but JP was so excited that he had to, uh, he had to do that. Um, but, uh, they are programmed, uh, working very well. And we like them. So. And that is everything I have. We are, we are closed on Monday for the holiday, next Monday, but that's, that's it.
Okay, so, um, while you're, I think, committee reports, we've done highway committee. Um, we did have a personnel committee meeting. Yeah, most of the time we spent in executive session and we want to continue a, a discussion with the full board in executive session. Um, I think it's safe to say we've, uh, continuing to make progress with our consultant Teresa Mealy on putting together the whole personnel, um, policy manual. And the one thing we thought would be appropriate was for the new draft time sheet to start being used. So, um, Carrie's gonna get that out and department heads will, she'll have a, a training session along with Teresa on how to use it. So this is going, going to be a uniform. A way of keeping track of payroll. So, and, and everyone's gonna be on the same schedule and on the same, and treated the same way. So that's coming. Watch for that. Okay, anything else that we, that Matt, cuz it was a long session. It was an hour and a half meeting, but most of it, we're gonna be giving you a brief synopsis of an executive session. Okay, um, any other committees meet? Nope.
I do have one thing that we have not discussed in three months or two or three months was the nine-one-one numbering yet. Over and, um, off of, where is it? Gleason Road?
Yeah.
It was too.
So we, we talked about coming up with a guideline for when to make address changes mandatory. Like, you know, if.
Yeah.
So we, we, yeah, I, I, I do have a, a list of, of the, of, of topics that we've got, we gotta get back to you, but yeah.
That's just one. We got through the budget. I thought maybe we ought to discuss it because, um, well, just for you guys to think about when we actually said about discussing, but we made some decisions as a board for some things with recreation. And we have done things which we have all agreed that if you make excuse, uh, changes or if you make concessions for one, you gotta do them forever, everybody. So we have a uniform recreation policy now and we're not doing it. And I'm just a firm believer that it's the most distasteful thing we will have to do as a board at times. But I do believe we should recommend that those numbers be put in order and meet what they should meet now. Because as soon as we start making concessions, this is just gonna get worse for us. And I've been thinking about this a lot. And so I thought I'd put that out there, um, when we do discuss it, um, just some food for thought.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Because as a board, we have set some pretty good standards for this town and we usually follow those pretty well. So.
Yeah.
And I think previous boards have shown the same, um, considerations. And I think that that's a, a good thing for a town, but, um, i- it's not a pleasant thing for some people, but you know, I've talked to people that have had to change their address and they said, you know, it's not the end of the world. It's inconvenient, but it's not the end of the world. So that's where I just wanted to bring that up.
Yes, please.
Move on to some other stuff.
Okay, um, in your, no, on the desk, um, you have the lengthy MS four State of Vermont grant agreement. Um, I did receive and I, I sent it up to town council to take a look. Yeah. Do I have the only one?
Yep, you're the only one, but we're going on.
That's fine.
Okay, well, you guys all.
We had twenty-two pages to read in our email.
I did. I, I, I sent it out to you.
Yes, you did.
Cuz I knew you folks really love going through that stuff. So, uh, message from Kevin. I've reviewed the grant agreement. I don't see anything that renders it inappropriate for you to sign on behalf of the town. So Kevin's okay with it. He does point out there are numerous procedural requirements on the town, which someone will have to have on their radar, including, for example, an audit report at the end of the fiscal year. And he attached a couple of documents from the state, um, which were incorporated by reference here. And I sent this information along to Bill. You got those, right? Okay, so, and you're okay with, get, one is a insurance requirement through VLCT and the other is a cybersecurity. We're, yeah, we should be okay with that.
It's, we're, we're okay.
Okay, all right. So.
The nature of this grant, is this a actual work grant that we can do stuff? I, I think that's what it said. It's, um.
The MS four grant?
Um, or is this for planning?
For planning.
Still planning?
It was planning. I think, I think they said we could plan, fully plan for projects and like a third to half of another one. So a lot of work.
Lot of planning.
Yes.
No construction grants yet.
This is kinda like the scoping study. If we do this, then we might be able to, we might be able to take that to go for another one, but this is.
Yeah, this is that step that you gotta take to get the other stuff that you were hopeful you get. Okay.
Okay.
So I'd move that we sign the application or the grant. They were asked the chair to sign on behalf of the town.
Okay.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the grant. Our, our share is fifty thousand dollars. Um, this is a two hundred thousand dollar grant.
Yeah, I was thinking of earlier, but we're already gonna spend that anyways, right? We have that somewhere on a ladder.
I think we do. But it's also, it goes over several years. So.
Yeah.
We've got time to do it. So motions made. Was there a second to that? Sorry.
Yeah, second.
Okay, motions made and seconded to approve the grant and authorize the chair to sign. Discussion.
Think we just did.
Think you did.
Yeah.
All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Uh, and that goes in there. I signed copies instead of the originals on some of these. This.
Okay.
Uh, don't worry. Yeah. Okay. And I'm gonna stick the email from Kevin in there so you have it as reference to. All right. So under action needed, we did the lawn services. We did the tax map. We did the municipal project manager by sending this to the highway committee and bill to, um, ask our three consulting services if they'd be willing to help us out. Um, before we go into executive session, do we have any other items? Joey brought up the E nine-one-one. Anything else? Okay, so let's see. There looks like there are three reasons to go into executive session. Um, the, the first would be for a contract review. And we would ask Marcia Chaffee and Marie, um, on behalf of the listeners to come in on it. Next would be a personnel matter. Oh, we wanted to take Carrie's personnel matter first.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, well, okay. Um, Carrie and a personnel issue and then the personnel committee with a couple of personnel issues to bring before the full board. So is there a motion to go into executive session for those reasons?
So move.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, please?
All right.
Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Going in the garbage.
So session at eight twenty-two. And do we, do we have a motion?
Yes, I would move that we accept the, uh, contract from Gail Gantek as presented to us with the amendment that we added on to portion three C.
And that amendment is one sentence and it reads, should the town exercise this option, the parties will negotiate a reduction in the overall contract price. A motion's been made. Is there a second? Motion's been made and seconded?
No, there is no further discussion.
I wasn't even gonna ask. We.
Yeah.
Um, is, is, is there any further discussion? If not, um, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Wait a minute. We've got one, one aye, Matt's aye, Joey's aye. Those against, please say nay.
Nay.
Two against, I'll break the tie in favor. I'll vote aye. So we have a three-two vote on accepting the contract.
Really like that.
Okay, so we will.
Move forward.
Move forward now.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, board. We appreciate you.
Yeah, we're, we're going to. Um, thank you guys very much. I mean, you put a lot of work into this. We, we appreciate it even though we nodded this thing like a dog that wouldn't let go of a bone. So there we have it.
Well, we got it done. We got it done. We can go forward and look to, uh, what the next couple of years are gonna be bringing up for us. So.
Yeah.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night.
Yep.
All right. Okay.
Back in.
Let me go get Carrie back.
Is it only the ayes that sign this thing?
Yes.
I think so.
You want me to go grab her?
Yes.
So, so I would move that we go back and resume our executive session.
For.
Purpose of personnel.
It's all personnel. Okay, we're back at executive session. Care, out of executive session, you're rec, we're recording, Sharon. All right, um, it is nine twenty-five. We're out. Is there a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded. All in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye.